At Council of Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Okay, at seven o'clock, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this Lord, with the very name of this God.
Welcome, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Tonight, we have four public hearings. If you would like to speak in relation to any of those public hearings, please step to the microphone and give your name and address for the record. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-304 approving the annual TIF certification of debt directing the finance director to file the certification report with the Potawatomi County Auditor. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Does anyone from the audience wish to address the council? Anyone here who wishes to address the council in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Discussion.
It was a thrilling read.
Yes, it was.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-305 approving an amendment to the budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, and directing the finance director to file the amendment with both the Iowa Department of Management and the Potawatomi County Auditor. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Discussion.
For the members of the public, if you're wondering what this is about, we discussed this last council meeting, and what this is, is an amendment for the purpose of acquiring more IT improvements for the city. We're in great need of being brought into the 21st century, and much of the 20th century for that matter, and these improvements are really going to help improve the efficiency of the city's staff and therefore result in what I think are decent savings, not only in cost savings, but efficiency savings for the city as well. So that's the purpose of the budget amendment. Doesn't really contain anything else besides those improvements that haven't been made before, so just want to put that out there for everybody.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-306, Disposition of an Interest in City Property, that being First Avenue right-of-way between 25th Street and 27th Street, and authorizing the mayor to sign a deed, an easement, and an agreement with the city and the Council of Savings Community School District related to the Mid-City Trail Phase Two project. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Anyone wishing to speak against? Name and address for the record, Bruce.
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I'd like for you guys to table this until after we get West Broadway corridor study done that you have go before we see what they have to say on this project, before we go ahead with it. And another question is, are we going to make all First Avenue trail or not?
No. And I'm just speaking for me, I don't think we know that yet until we get the study done.
And we shouldn't go ahead with this until after we get the study done.
Would we lose the funding if we waited? Do we know?
I don't know.
Well, as I asked kind of that question during the study session, whether or not it could be applied to other trail projects, and my understanding from that answer is that it most likely could be transferred, but it was kind of the big master plan to keep moving forward on this.
I think they thought that one had a better chance of getting the federal funds because of the...
Larry's not here, but I thought he said you couldn't.
Because, he said because of the competitive nature of the grants, this one had the best chance of succeeding if we diverted to another part.
We have options to apply for that money for other trails, but the fact we've been awarded money for this trail, I don't think we can shift it to another trail.
He said if we did that, they would just pass it on to somebody else and we'd have to apply for different ones.
Reapply.
But I guess I would say too, that, you know, there's, part of that was is that the city years ago agreed to deed this to the schools, so that part gets deeded to them anyway. Am I correct in that?
No. After the time limit has been passed, you're talking 20 years, it was never done, and the one reason why it was never done was because the school couldn't afford to put tunnel underneath the tracks. They wanted all their students to be able to be indoors and not out in the elevates.
Well, we couldn't have deeded them the railroad track property anyway at that time, but...
But they were going to get permission to build underneath the tracks.
Okay, well, I think...
Now you're including those track area, which before we couldn't.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to deed them this property? It was my understanding in the packet I read that there was an agreement, they would get deed to that property.
There are portions, I think, that have already been deeded over, but not the portion that we're talking about between the buildings there.
Oh, okay, so there wasn't an agreement years ago to deed this to them? I don't know why I thought that was part of the packet. Do you remember that?
There was a letter.
Did not complete it, okay, all right. I guess what I would say is that if we did this, I guess we could hold it, but if we were to deed it to the school, they're willing to do this, and we can get this portion put in, we have the funding for it now. I don't see what the negative is.
This is the thing I keep asking, is First Avenue only going to be a trail?
I don't think we know, but I think that...
But then we shouldn't do this until we know, because there might be a completely different plan, and then, once this is done, we can undo it.
Well, I think that the trail can go anywhere, it can meander, it doesn't have to stay on first, so it can be on first up to this point and then meander over to second if need be, so I don't, for me, it doesn't preclude doing this now.
But the deal is, the school basically didn't do what they were going to do because it cost too much money to put this underneath the track, because they didn't want their students outdoors. Now, all of a sudden, they decided, hey, this is a good idea. No matter how you put it, the taxpayers are still going to have to maintain that trail. No matter if the city doesn't, the school does. No matter what, like I always said before, and all of us got our little sayings, is if it doesn't come out of my left-hand pocket, it comes out of my right-hand pocket, no matter what.
Better offense to yours too, absolutely.
And I gotta say, the school board, under tax per capita, brings in more money than the Council of Loss, than the City of Council of Loss.
Council of Loss is third now.
That's what I meant, you know, you got your county, you got your city, and...
Your point is well taken, even with grant money, we're still ponying up, I heard a couple hundred thousand dollars.
If you want to work on trails and stuff, and I can't say nothing right now, maybe we can shift it to Fairmont Park.
You're here.
You know, that's a great, a million dollars, or $600,000 would go a long ways up in that area.
That part we do know we can't do.
This is state money that comes from road use tax funds that is specifically for trails.
Well, next thing is, if you want to stretch a property that stretches almost from downtown Council of Loss, and you probably have a lot of right-of-way, and I know it ain't the perfect place, is Ninth Avenue. You have enough land up almost on one side to go straight from, you know, South Eighth, clear down to Thirty-Sixth and...
And the reason then, Bruce, they have chosen Second Avenue is it is the street that runs from the core of downtown to the Bob Carey Pedestrian Bridge, and so it's the straight shot through to Omaha.
Eventually, you're going to go right through the property, I'm taking care of yours, on Thirteenth Sixth Avenue, down to there, and you could hook up right there.
Thanks for your input.
It has raised an interesting about the whole trail, but as to this piece, I do not ever see this thin strip of ground between one part of TJ's campus and another ever being built on, surely it can't be built on. I'm not sure what else we do with it, and I believe my colleague, Councilmember White, said this afternoon, I hope I'm getting this correct, and I would agree with it if it is, that, you know, the folks down there, the TJ students, they deserve to have that, to have their campus be whole. It used to be, you know, separated by a train track, and I think the high school students on the west side of our community deserve to have a campus that's as beautiful as any other part of the community, so I hope I got that right.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm really just excited to see some of the trail system going in in the west end and see development in the west end. We see so many times, I think people feel that the west end gets overlooked, and with the new developments in the core and putting this trail in and the Hannafin Park, I feel like that those are much needed things in the west end, and it's going to help to redevelop the west Broadway corridor, and I'm very much in favor of that. I just, I know that Fairmont Park's important, but I can't imagine why we would take funds away from a project that's already been so far in progress in the west end and send it up to the east end of town to this park. It just, I'm happy to see this happening, so...
Any other discussion?
Do we have a motion?
No, anyone wishing to speak in favor in the audience? Anyone from the council wish to add to the discussion?
I have a motion to approve.
I guess I have a motion, I guess.
Second.
And a second?
Melissa.
And now discussion.
I guess I share the concern that we're applying a lot of money to this project. Again, it doesn't matter if it's grant money, and we're using a lot of money here out of city resources that doesn't come from grants. To do that at a time when West Broadway development plan is still up in the air strikes me as kind of odd, and we're going to build a stretch of this that isn't going to be connected to anything. I mean, this is the trail to nowhere, but it is inviting increased traffic from the general public through a high school campus full of students during the school day, and I kind of disagree with the superintendent's assessment during the study session, that somehow this is going to improve security for the students. I'm not getting that. So the expenditure of money, while we, when the Parks Department, or when we've already said today at the study session that we don't have enough funds for the Fairmont Park improvement, but we are applying money to this, I just don't understand. So I can't support going any further on this until we have some questions resolved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Nay.
And people at home want to know, the vote was four to one. This is the time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-307, authorizing the finance director to file with the state auditor the annual financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2014, for the City of Council of Loss. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests, anyone wishing to speak against? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordnance is on first reading. Ordnance 6221, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.27.020B by rezoning all of that part of the southeast quarter, southeast quarter of Section 10-74-44, and that part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section 15-74-44, lying north of Veterans Memorial Highway right-of-way, and that part of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section 11-74-44, lying west of the South 24th Street right-of-way, and north of Veterans Memorial Highway right-of-way. Propose Lot 1, South 24th Street and Highway 275 Industrial, from A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial District as defined in Chapter 15.20, and setting a public hearing for December 15, 2014, at 7:00 p.m.
Move the ordinance to second reading and set public hearing for 7:00 p.m. December 15, 2014.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I have to abstain, and I didn't realize it until just now. I think that Advance Southwest Iowa submitted the request for the owner, or for the people on this property, and because I serve on that board, even though I don't stand again in any way, I want to make sure that it doesn't appear that I've got a conflict of interest. I would have brought it up at the study session, but I just checked with Dick, I just didn't realize that, you know, because they made the application.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Brannigan?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
White?
Aye. And it, I'm sorry, abstain.
It's on the record now.
No, it's an abstain. I'm just, because I started reading something else, I'm going to have to do the same thing on C. I'm sorry, it's going to be the same situation because their director filed those applications. And no, it wasn't an aye, it was a, I was reading this trying to keep it moving.
All right. We have our vote, four and one abstention.
Ordnance 6222, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.27.020B by rezoning the northerly half of the property at 240 Kenmore Avenue, described as that part of Outlot 1, Key Line Home Place, adjacent to the north half of Lot 12, auditor subdivision of lots 13, 16, and 14, auditor subdivision of the southwest quarter, northeast quarter of Section 30-75-43, more fully described in Book 102, page 8140, of record at the Potawatomi County Recorder's Office, from C2 Commercial District to R1 Single Family Residential District as defined in Chapter 15.08B, and setting a public hearing for December 15, 2014, at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
For the public, this is kind of a cautionary note about the hazards of zoning. This refers to a house that was effectively cut in half by two different zoning areas, one residential and one commercial. And think, okay, why is this concern me out there in the public? Well, if you have a house that it happens to fall in a property that has a commercial zoning attached to it, and you want to sell that house, good luck to you, because you're not going to be able to find a buyer that's able to get a loan for a house on commercial property. It just can't be done. And so when we make these zoning decisions, we have to sometimes be sensitive to the residents and be willing to make exceptions to that zoning when these sorts of issues come up. So this is what we're doing tonight, and I certainly hope that when these issues arise for others, that we are equally as sensitive to their pain.
It was a very unusual zoning, and it's on the hill with, at the bottom of the hill is Pierce Street, and on the top of the hill is Kenmore, and this property just jutted out over a commercial zoning down on Pierce Street, really, but it was, I think it cost the homebuyer a sale.
I think so, I went by there the other day and the sign was gone, and you know, I thought maybe it was just, what would you call it, Scrivener's error? When it was done, that it wasn't the intent, it's just the way it laid on the overlay? No, back from the earliest zoning, it's been like that, so it's just been overlooked all those years.
And it easily happens, because when you're drawing the zoning maps, I mean, we've seen how spotty and piecemeal the map sometimes appears because we're trying to accommodate individual commercial entities, but yet we have an older city, and there's frequently a lot of housing right next to these, and it really creates zoning problems. So that's why we need to be a little bit more sensitive about allowing sometime exceptions to these zoning decisions and providing some remedy to homeowners.
Any further discussion on that end? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Ordnance 6223, amending Chapter 15.20, I1 Light Industrial District by amending Section 15.20.050, site development regulations relative to the maximum height allowable.
Move the ordinance to second reading, adopting Community Development Department, recommendation number one, but stating up to 135 feet.
Second.
Is that, that's contrary to what the, so are you making that an amendment to the...
Yeah. Well, I made it as part of the motion, do I need to do a motion and then amend? Dick, what...
Well, I think the Planning Commission's recommendation was to go to 150 to allow stuff on the top. If you do that, you eliminate that ability, so...
The letter asked for 133.
Without, it said without mechanicals.
Okay, so I'll amend my own motion to 150. Got it. Okay. Yeah. Concur with planning.
And is there a second?
I do, I'm still, go ahead. I say I'm still fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, discussion. Um, I thought there was something I wanted to say about that, but I guess I don't, so all those in favor?
Roll call needs to be...
Oh, that's what I wanted to say, roll call.
Brannigan?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
White?
Abstain.
Ordnance 6224, amending Title 17, housing by amending Chapter 17.01 through Chapter 17.14, and setting a public hearing for December 15, 2014.
Move the ordinance to second reading, setting a public hearing for December 15, 2014, 7:00 p.m.
Second.
I move to amend the ordinance, the draft ordinance, to substitute and replace with a draft that I have presented this afternoon, and will give a copy as an exhibit to the clerk, consisting of 25 pages plus an additional page of, consisting of one page in length of additional terminology with regard to tenant's duty as part of the substituted language.
Second concurs.
Discussion.
So just to be clear, sorry, let me interrupt you. So just to be clear on that, the city attorney page, along with yours, 1709.090, 100, 110, and then 17.01040, okay, thank you.
Yes. The purpose of this in English is actually that, there has been quite a bit of discussion about Title 17. Title 17 is the housing code of the city municipal code. It has anything, it has everything to do with housing, quite a bit of it deals with rental property, but it actually deals with all residential housing. There has been a draft that's been reviewed by several people, including a committee of residents, and there's been quite a bit of discussion on a few of the pieces. This draft primarily, what I've intended by this draft is to get it out now three weeks before the public hearing. Most of it, I truly believe, is uncontroversial. It's involving putting a lot of the sentences into plainer English and more simplified, getting rid of a lot of clauses and getting rid of quite a bit of the legalese that tends to happen over time, understandably, as ordinances get amended over the decades. So that when we, so that in the next couple of weeks, and I hope we have, a very good discussion about what changes we should do, if any, to rental inspections particularly. I want us all be able to speak in English and so that we know what we disagree about, because I think quite a bit of it, and a lot of discussions I've had with people who do disagree passionately on certain elements of potential changes, they do seem to agree on the vast majority of other things, just like a lot of things in life, and so I just want it to be clearer. However, to be fair, also in this draft, it does not change as it's currently written, it does not change from the current substantive standard, the current rulebook by which rental properties are judged. There's been quite a bit of discussion today. I personally, just speaking for myself, I've always said I'm in favor of an active rental inspection program. I predominantly believe that because there's a state law that says we have to have one, and we took an oath to uphold the state law, and that's whether we like it or not. So I believe we're obligated to have an inspection program, and so therefore the question becomes, what should the standard be? What should the rules be? What should the inspectors look for? That's a truly legitimate question. We have a current one on the books, the International Property Maintenance Code, with significant revisions to it that we make locally. Plus, we also integrate partially the International Existing Building Code for older structures, which we have quite a few in our community. There are other codes out there, and there was some very good discussion today about state law allowing different codes, and I look forward in the next couple of weeks hearing from people, is the current code the be-all, end-all? Could there be a better one? Absolutely. And so I, speaking for myself, I remain entirely open to be persuaded, if there can be another code that is not subjective and the gist, the meat of it, is approved by this body rather than leaving it to the bureaucracy to write regulations that are very, very substantive, because you can't vote them out. You can vote us out, so I think it's proper that the meat of it, we have to take the heat, the buck stops with us, so to speak. So whatever it is, we have to own it. And so that's, in my mind, what the requirement has to be, what that standard is. I remain open to be persuaded, and I really do want to hear a lot. I've heard quite a bit from some folks, but not as many as I'd hoped. And so I would particularly like to hear from other landlords of all sizes, I'd like to hear from neighborhoods, particularly neighborhood associations and homeowner's associations, what they think. But the purposes of this amendment, in short, is just to try to, the one we move, moving forward, I think this is in plainer English, so then we can fight about the stuff we really want to fight about, rather than the whole thing which will never get done. So this is just my attempt to clean up the things that I don't think there's really much fight about.
Well, and we actually have three weeks, it's one of those unique times of the year where we have three weeks between the council meetings, which allows the citizens of Council of Loss to, well, you get an extra week to fully review this fantastic read of an ordinance, and I encourage you all to set aside your turkey dinner and study.
Thank you.
So I want to make sure I understand the process here, because the amendment that I addressed during the study session is another 13 pages, so are we making amendments just to get the draft forward for public hearing? Because if I make an amendment, it's, okay, it gets a draft out there, but it materially changes the substance of the ordinance.
I think that's a fair question. Speaking for myself, I think, as to your, I think that if my amendment were approved and then yours was approved, to the extent yours necessarily contradicted, which it does on some significant points, it truly does, I think it would override it, if I'm not mistaken, with the last amendment. So, and speak, well, I'll speak to, well, I'll tell you now because I think it's fair, even though it's, your motion isn't up yet, I suspect it will be. I need to know more, like I said this afternoon, I remain to be persuaded, I need to know more about the background behind it, so I can't support it yet without that, but I want information. Maybe in three weeks I can support it. Right now, I'm just ignorant of what it would imply, so I think that's fair before we vote on this to let you get my hand.
I guess this is part of my concern here, is that if we then don't take up that amendment and we wait until second reading, and we make a substantial change to the ordinance at that time, then we're kind of asking for an additional reading on it at this point.
I would agree, and I'm fine with that, because that would be fair, I think the people deserve that.
We have as many readings as we need to...
Yes.
Yeah, we've had other ordinances go to four readings before, so that's...
Yeah. We've had other ordinances go to four readings before. So that's, yeah, that's not uncommon.
You raise a very good point, and so I agree with it.
Yep. So I just want to be clear on what we're doing because I, I think it is very important, at least the, the intention of my amendment, and I just want to put it out there so the public can understand what it is that, that we're talking about. Right now, the, the ordinance reincorporates rather voluminous international code provisions that we're not prepared by, by anybody here in this, in the city. We, we defer to, to that particular entity, I guess, to make decisions, and then, then we incorporate them through, through ordinance, and then those stacks of regulations in effect become city code. I have a significant problem with that concept because we don't like it when Congress provides so much authority to the IRS or the EPA. So that my, my amendment that I seek to go forward helps roll that back to the extent that we are adopting far simpler standards that are today commonly used by the federal government, by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in how it assesses health and safety standards for housing. And that was the original intent of us sitting down and doing these changes is, is we wanted to do something that helps improve health and safety. And, and when you get a s- stack of code references that someone else has written that's about the size of a New York City phone book, you, you, you gotta pass it to know what, what's in it. It is what, is what's kind of being said. And, and that's why I want to drop back on the next council meeting and consider alternatives, because the state of Iowa has supplied us with five possible code options to, to take on. And we, and as my understanding here is that we have chosen the most complex code that we possibly could. And if, if you want to read that code, you gotta buy it. That's what it boils down to. So i- if you want to read my code, you go onto the HUD website. So, so I guess we'll continue forward this, this pro- this process into the next hearing or after the, the public hearing. And, and we'll, we'll discuss those, those other potential amendments then at that time.
I, I think the other, the, the one thing, if I may, the, it is true, you won't find unless you buy it. It's, it's a code put together by the code inspectors all across the country. We don't have to use that one. That's the current one. Again, I remain, persuade me, give me some more information. I'll be glad to look at it. But it, it has specific standards and it's, it's ones that we would pass rather than have the bureaucracy. If, if we could solve it by just passing a couple pieces of paper and that was all we needed, I don't think that would work. I don't think that works in this situation, but if that worked, yeah. But I think there's going to have to be a lot of interpretation, and I would much rather this body set the overarching rules. Don't get me wrong. I don't want us to set dot I's, cross T's because that's what regulations are for, but the big stuff, what the main thing should be, I, I really think have got to be done by this body. So I, so I'm not sure if we necessarily in the end disagree on the substance, but maybe just how we get there.
And just to make sure everybody understands, the international code is already in the ordinance. We're not doing that. We're not changing that, but it would continue, this ordinance would continue to reference that, which it references it now. And again, I had said earlier and still believe, if there is another way, as long as it isn't subjective to the point where we would not have anything to back up how the determination was being made by the city inspector, I would certainly be open to that. But, and I guess the way Nate said it is convince me, because if I can get enough to show that it's not just going to be a because I said so, without being able to cite any reason or ordinance, I could probably consider that. But what, you know, right now, what I saw earlier was just, you know, I say it's by the railroad tracks, you can't have a rental there. I can't go with that. That's just not, I need something that a property owner could say, that's not what the code says, and have something substantial. You know, you, you're going against your own code, but this doesn't have any of that. It's just very minimal.
It, it, I think we have to be careful what we wish for. Again, there are other, there are other, there are other options, but we, if we're going to adopt it, this body has to bite the bullet and adopt it and not because I, I, what I fear, and I, I suspect if I'm, if I may be so bold to assume, that the idea, I think it'd be agreeable that the idea that we probably would agree it's a bad thing if, if the bureaucracy gets to take a simple statement of, we will address public welfare, public safety, and then we tell them, you do with that what you want. How do you appeal that? How do you decide? When you, when you write rules, yes, it makes it longer. I take your point entirely that maybe we're using the wrong rulebook. But I think we've got to have a rulebook because then you know, if, if that rule isn't being followed, you can point to it. It's rather than, I don't like you, or I'm going to, I think the, or I think health and welfare means you need to install a pool in the backyard. Now, that's a ridiculous example, but if it says I can talk about public welfare or safety, I suppose I could make an argument that you need sunshine and water. But see, that just shows you, I don't want to leave that open. I, I, I think you've got, you've got to, you've got to make us tell you what the rules are. So tell us the rules you want. And in the end, it's got to be ones that fulfill the level of safety because the state law says we have to. If you change the state law, it'd be a whole different ballgame.
As you said, be, be careful what you wish for, and, and Councilwoman White made a, made an excellent point, that these, these international code standards are already in, in existence. And I hate to frighten anybody, but that this is not an issue that just pertains to rental. These international codes that you haven't read and that you, I, I'm a lawyer and, and I have a hard time reading through these things and connecting all the cross-references. These codes apply to every single home and business property out there. So they already apply to you. And if you can't pull them down off of a website, if you can't figure out what they say, and you have to rely upon a, a government individual to tell you what they mean and whether or not your, your home, your building, your business complies, that's a little frightening. So that's what I'm seeking to drive, drive the discussion on.
You know, there, there is one thing, just one minor point on that. I, well, actually, I think it's a major point, but it's quick. Is you can't get the whole book, and I meant to say it before, and I didn't get it in, I'm sorry. You can't get the whole book online without somebody violating federal copyright. But you can, under, the fair use doctrine is what it's called, you can go to the, you can Google for the International Property Maintenance Code, which is what we're talking about. And you can look at each section at a time, just like you can do actually on the city website, the municipal ordinance. So you could look, if you really wanted to, and actually I did it myself, if you look at every section and then print it out for purposes of study and use, and you're not trying to sell it or use it for commercial gain, you're using it for fair use. So it's, it's not quite the case that you can't see the sections. You can see, it's hyperlinked. You can see all of the chapter headings and the, and the sections underneath of it and click on whatever ones you want. You won't get it all in one book form unless you pay the people who publish it. That's true.
Sounds easy. Just what we want from government.
Well, and I guess I would say too, is just to put some minds at ease out in the public. This, and this code has been on the books. And in study session today, we asked the building inspector how many appeals there's been. What did he say? Like five max?
Three, three over a five-year period.
Over a five-year period. So, you know, if it were a really big problem, you would think there'd be more appeals being filed for, and there's just not. So, and again, I will consider anything that anybody wants to bring forward that has actual substance to it that can be cited by a property owner as this does or does not apply to the code. But what we were given earlier today does it very clearly, and Councilman Ringenberg said, you know, it intentionally wouldn't incorporate all of the rest of the section eight program, which is chapter ten, and the guide for doing the inspections, which goes hand in hand with that law. And then that would just leave it up to our building department to make those subjective decisions, and I don't want to do that.
Well, I think it sounds as though that we're going to continue this, this discussion into the next meeting.
In the next meeting.
In the next meeting, maybe one after.
Do we all agree that we encourage people to give us information?
I, I, I certainly hope so.
Yes, indeed.
And I, I hope we can continue with the ad hoc committee that was, that was formed. And, and I guess I'll just close by, by quoting the late Milton Freeman, who, who quipped that hell hath no fury like a bureaucrat scorn. And we are providing lots of ammunition.
And for those that are on the committee, I've asked both Councilman Ringenberg and Councilman Watson to give me their information. Nate will provide his in both a completed format and the amended format, because I know some people had told me they had started to read the ordinance as it came out. And so his work format will show the strike-throughs and, and the amendments in green and, and the verbiage that they're going to keep in, in red, but if he intends to delete it, he's striking it through. So I'll get that out and explain it.
And it's a draft. It's, it's my intent to move the discussion forward, and hopefully the things we agree about, will agree on, and we make those things easier to understand. I, I hope we all agree about that.
And I've already gotten some constructive feedback. There's already a, a recommended change. Go from biannual fee payments to the, the annual fee payments.
Sure. Yeah, I, I, yeah, and it'd be glad.
You ask the landlords for input, they can give it to you.
Everybody who wants, yeah. I, I wish we got more, quite frankly. I guess be careful what you wish for, but I genuinely mean it. We, we don't, on many issues, get a lot of public input, and it's.
I have a feeling this will be a different case.
Well, I, I, I hope so because we're, that's what.
On both sides of the issue, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Be a part of the process, please.
Yes, please.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
This on the amendment, correct?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Pose same sign. And then on the ordinance as amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is on third reading. Ordinance sixty-two nineteen, amending ordinance numbers fifty-seven, sixty-six, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty, thirty-seven, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended Playland Park urban renewal area in the city of Council Plus, county of Potawatomi, state of Iowa, buying for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Council Plus, county of Potawatomi, Council Plus Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Playland Park urban renewal area. Amendment number three to the Playland Park urban renewal plan.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Just in keeping with my past votes on, on this, I've in the past expressed a number of concerns about Playland Park project, and I intend to remain consistent in my votes on this. Earlier, I, I brought a legal question to the city attorney, and he's researching this, this now concerning how, how the property was, was conveyed to, to the city and whether or not there were restrictions on, on how the property was to be used. So, and we're not going to get that obviously tonight, so I look forward to hearing that as we can, as we consider the, the subsequent pieces of, of this particular project.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
And that was four to one for those at home.
Ordinance sixty-two twenty, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the South Twenty-Four Street urban renewal within the city of Council Plus, county of Potawatomi, state of Iowa, buying for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Council Plus, county of Potawatomi, Lewis Central Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the South Twenty-Four Street urban renewal area.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sharon?
We can do your roll call.
Any discussion?
Just to explain the, the difference in my, in my votes, I, I support this particular TIF, TIF district and that this, this project, I think it's a very good project. And the difference between my voting positions is the fact that I think the, the developers and the, and the companies involved in this have made a very clear business proposal out of this. We can track, we can track the, the revenues, how, how they're going to be repaid to, to the city and how this benefits. The city creates jobs and opportunities in the long run. I don't have that same level of confidence with the Playland project, hence the difference in my votes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Roll call, though.
Sorry.
Brannigan?
Roll call. Keep us on track, Marcy.
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
White.
Abstain.
Resolutions, resolution fourteen dash three zero eight approving the allocation of the two thousand and fifteen multifamily housing home investment partnership program funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Beacon Place Two project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I see this is a fantastic project down there in twenty-third and nineteenth or thereabouts, I think. It's just a, it's the second pha- phase of, of more housing, different types of housing, nice urban environment. You've got multifamily, you've got, you've got detached single family, you've got some townhomes. Just fantastic, and with, with programs to help folks who, who would want to learn about finances and, and it's really helping people better themselves. And it's a fantastic program, providing needed housing for those who are working for it and, and being a part of the, being a part of the future, particularly for their kids. And it's, it's fantastic. And the organization doing it, Neighbor Works has, has got a good track record, so I have every confidence it'll be done well.
So, so folks understand a, the resolution references program funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, just for purposes of, of clarity. That's grant money that, that comes through the state that is applied for by, by the city. Now, that doesn't mean it's free money, because guess where the state gets its grant money? That's right from you. So, so you're still paying for it. In the end, it's just that we're now spending someone else's money and, and, and not city, not city revenue. So that's the basic difference of what's going on.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution fourteen dash three zero nine authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with H D R Incorporated for engineering services in connection with the Playland Park project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment to consider both B and C at the same time, since the contract referred back to the design engineer. That way they both pass at the same time. So my motion would be to approve both of them at the same time.
Second.
Discussion on the amendment.
At the, no, not, not amendment, the amendment, the amendment is to consider them together.
Yeah, since there was a timing issue.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
All right. So any other discussion? This is a vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And vote on, um, did that cover everything, Dick? I don't know that.
Should have Marcy read C into the record now, and then you'll have a, a, an actual.
Consolidated vote, yeah.
Okay.
Vote on the, the.
Motion by Brannigan and Watson to approve resolution fourteen dash three oh nine. White made amendment to consider approving items B and C together at the same time, seconded by Ed, was approved as amended. Now, resolution fourteen dash three one zero approving the development series services agreement with Nautilus Development for the implementation of the Playland Park master plan, now as amended.
Is that approved with the last vote we just made, or? It's all approved.
Together, and now we have to vote on that.
All right. Any discussion?
If I may, yeah, I, I voted for the amendment, but now I'm going to vote against the, the combined resolution. Again, I, I have concerns about the. Again, I, I have concerns about the, the timing, the, the, the funding, a number of things about the, the Playland project. At the study session, I, I also asked about further study that would be required by the, the Army Corps of, of Engineers because we're, we're making this project right next to the levy and there's a requirement for a rather lengthy study by the Corps before, before an- anything can be constructed so close to, to the actual levy structure itself. So we're making an investment here of, of about half a million dollars to begin to convince the Corps that it's a good idea to, to build that project there. With, again, with all the other projects that, that we have going forward, that we need to be applying redevelopment money to, I have a concern about whether or not this is the best project to be moving forward before we take on these other development projects.
Jay, can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Jay Nodle, twenty-two eighty-five South Sixty-seventh Street, Exarban Village in Omaha. And I'm with Nodle Companies. Just to respond, Councilman, I, I would like to clarify one thing. In the study session today, we discussed the process. And I, I may not have made myself clear or as clear as I could have. The process for any development of any kind in any jurisdiction along a waterway like this is to develop a plan and present that plan to the Army Corps of Engineers. And with respect to our compensation, there are two pieces of our compensation. One is to coordinate things and one is to oversee the design and the construction of the infrastructure. And that second piece doesn't kick in until there's a notice to proceed. So your calculation of fees is very generous and I wish you were accurate, but I, I don't believe that you are. We'll be coordinating things, but until there is a notice to proceed, the second part of that fee does not kick in. So it's, it's much less of an investment than you suggest. And in, in order for any project to proceed, there is a required submittal, just to be clear. And that submittal is, is required to contain certain kinds of drawings and so forth. So I just wanna present those to.
I, I appreciate the clarification and, and I'm basing, basing my, my comments based upon what the ci- what the city staff has previously given us in staff paperwork. And, and I, I drew my, my fees off that. And what we're doing tonight is by approving these, these resolutions, we're setting the agreements in motion that will enable these steps of compensation to take place forward. So I, I appreciate your comments and, and I hope you're right and that we're, we, we make this happen for much, much faster, easier, and for less money than, than, than what we're fully authorizing.
Well, just to be clear, one, one more time. You won't issue as a city a notice to proceed until there is a project that is approved because there wouldn't be anything to proceed with.
Thank you. Any other discussion or?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in there that, that, you know, I'm fully supportive of this, of this resolution. Community Development Director said today that the city does not have the, the staff and the resources to act as developer of this piece of ground. It's a very complicated, long-term, large-scale project. And so the, the need certainly exists for a company such as Nodle to, to handle all the tasks associated with that. And I know that we will get additional documentation planned, et cetera, on this. So I look forward to those additional documents and, thank you.
And the, just so I'm clear with people, cause I got one standing and one raising their hand, the item we're talking about is compensation. And if you just wanna talk about the project in general, you can do that when it's time for citizen input. If you have particular information on the compensation package for the development agreement, you're welcome to talk at this time, but.
I just wanna say that the, the record of accomplishment, I think it's a, a fair agreement. It's, it's, and not only that, the, the record of accomplishment, not just locally or regionally, but certainly nationally of, of Nodle Development is fantastic. And the one that I personally quite enjoy is Exarban. If, if folks have been in that area, imagine that in Western Council Bluffs. This is the company that can do it and it's a fair agreement. And I, I look fantastic. Again, I think, I think the folks of our community deserve this sort of thing. We need to think big, we need to think good of ourselves because we are. The future's here.
And I just wanna share those same comments in that there aren't too many companies that can market this. This is a very valuable piece of property that has a lot of potential to bring a lot of activity to the riverfront with people living and working there. You know, this project could stand to have six hundred, nine hundred people working in that area. So, you know, it's potential to be a much larger employer and have a much larger tax base than the one we voted on earlier is certainly there. But I think it's there because we have a developer that's capable of taking it there. It, it is gonna take extensive marketing and it's gonna take those contacts that the Nodle Company has and to bring this all together to make this happen. And I, again, I believe that the West End's time is here to shine and I think that this is definitely going to be the start of the development of the West Broadway Corridor. This is really going to help make that happen. So the compensation package to me is reasonable and, and moving forward with this, I, I believe that they can make that happen.
And please don't let anything that I've said su- suggest that I'm questioning anybody's professionalism or anything like, like that. It's just simply put, I, I'm just concerned that with the need, with the other development needs that are crying out, we've, we've been planning on mid-city corridor, the, the West Broadway development area that, that really needs a, a development boost. I just think we're, we're, we've got our priorities misaligned and, and I would, I just wish that we were addressing those problems first. That, that's my point.
I appreciate that.
Well, and I, I, I asked a whole litany of questions this afternoon and that was, you know, doing my own due diligence in advance of a vote. So the information was very helpful to me and I'm, you know, again, ready to vote aye.
All right, is that the end of the discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
And that was four to one.
Applications, permits, and cancellations, eight, eight, one and two.
Motion to approve, eight, eight, one and two.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience want to address the council? Told you we'd get you up there.
Jane Bu.
Hold, can you pull it down, Jane?
I can, maybe. Jane Bu, three one two North Forty-first Street, the Playland Park area, obviously. And I also agree that Exarban Village is wonderful. Nodle has done, I worked for the National Park Service for years, I just retired, and they built our building. It's a wonderful building, it's beautiful, they do wonderful work. But I think, number one, what I was very disappointed about was the publicity for the public meetings. I have attended numerous meetings over the years for different developments and this is the first one I can say that I maybe would be happy to see, but not to the extent that it is on the master plan. I think it's way too much for that area, especially when you're talking two ways in and out and that many apartments, townhomes, individual homes, it's too much. But I'm very disappointed in all of you folks that the, the publicity, it wasn't announced. When were these meetings announced that you were doing this master plan when you've done other housing developments that wanted to go down there? I went to numerous meetings, I was at where they had designs out there for us to look at and all of that. You didn't offer that to us. You didn't inform the neighborhood that you were doing this. And so you just kinda, when you, when I saw it in the paper, it was like, first I saw Nodle and I thought, well, that's good, they're good at what they do and what they've done. But why didn't I know about this? And I also wanna challenge you, really, would you want to live in that Playland Park area with all of those people that are gonna, you said nine hundred people, maybe working down there?
There could be somebody else.
And then all of the residential people? You wanna fight that traffic and you wanna live in that neighborhood and have to condi- you know, deal with all that? I think you have a lot to think about before you move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Dave Flavin. It's F L A V I N. Three oh seven North Forty-first Street. I was here last two weeks ago. I still haven't heard about your infrastructure being changed down there. You're gonna be, you're putting five hundred thou- possibly five hundred thousand dollars out there? What could you do with that money to, for that infrastructure first? Worry about your infrastructure. There are still questions that are still going on about Playland Park down there. I don't know how you can even consider doing what you're doing until those questions are answered. I think you guys are making a big mistake. You're really disappointing the, the community of Council Bluffs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Thornton, T H O R N T O N, forty-one nineteen Avenue D. Obviously, I'm in the Playland Park area also. My main concern is selfish, very narrow. How much is all this gonna cost me? How much? In taxes.
You know, just to give you a little ballpark, and, and I don't know that I can do it justice, so take the, the caveat that, that I may be off, but we are applying for a rise grant which would put in the streets to access that. The interstate is scheduled to be rebuilt with a full interchange on Forty-first Street. The.
Has DOT approved that?
The interstate is scheduled to be rebuilt with a full interchange on Forty-first Street. They, the only thing they have not done is change the timeframe of which that will be done, which is scheduled as the last phase. And we've asked them to expedite that and move it up. The project won't go forward, my understanding, if that doesn't happen. So it won't be two ways in and out, it'll be a full interchange there on Broadway. So it can go either east or west. And then TIF would be a component of the development and that money comes from the actual property owners and not from you. There will be, with any development, there will be maintenance that goes into the streets and those types of things. But as was stated earlier, with two or three hundred new residents and, and potentially two commercial office spaces, that would greatly increase the property taxes. Road use tax funds pay for the snow and street removal and those are based on a population. And so those numbers would help with the, the snow and street removal. So it's a nominal effect to you, I won't say it isn't an effect. Councilman Ringenberg has pointed out several times tonight that those state rise dollars are state taxes that, that you, you pay and I pay and everybody in Iowa pays. Those are grant dollars that we apply for to alleviate some of the burden locally because they're paid by everybody throughout Iowa. I think that's just good business to apply for those. And you can extrapolate back and say that's, comes out of your pocket at some point, but.
I guess my thought is that I don't see any benefit to me, again, being selfish and narrow here, I don't see any benefit to me out of this project. Apartments, I don't need, I have a house. Townhomes, I don't need. How many empty places do we have around town? I don't know. I didn't do research.
So I, I'll give you a, a broad benefit in that every year, a, a big percentage of the city's expenses are personnel-related. And every year, those city employees get a raise. And unless we keep growing the property tax base, eventually that raise will come out of your pocket. And, and this council has been fortunate over the last eight years not to increase the levy. The valuation has gone up and so that's helped keep taxes down. And, and if we just stay static, you may not see a benefit, but you'll see a detriment, I think.
Well, I have no problem with progress and, and development. I don't. But in this area, as has been pointed out before, even if DOT does come through, which I don't see a commitment there from anybody.
Well, you can certainly see it going on all around. You know, they're gonna let five hundred million in contracts next summer, so.
Sure, all around, I can. But even if it comes through here and it's completed, how many accesses do we, are we still left with for this property? Two. Forty-first Street and off of Avenue G. For six to nine hundred cars a day, we still have two accesses, which bothers me. So those are my concerns, cost to me and access with all this going on.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone from the council?
Wait, there's.
Oh, sorry, Jane.
I'm Jean Edwards, eleven one one five East Twenty-ninth Avenue. And I'm here and listened this afternoon about the housing inspection plan. And I know I'll have more comments on the day we do the public hearing on that. But I just wanted, since I had an opportunity to give a couple of points. We talked a little bit today, or you did, about if something has passed the Section Eight inspection, it's basically waived for the city inspection. But that's been crossed out of the current draft ordinance, I noticed as I was reading it. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. And we talked a little bit about making sure landlords are prepared so we can prepare our properties before the inspector comes in. And you know, our lengthy or, this is what our inspection form has looked like. We've been doing our own inspections and some of us landlords got together and made a little bullet point thing down the middle that was supposed to make all the things more clear, which we do go online and, and we can, you know, highlight on the six oh two point, whatever, whatever, and look at a little more details and then we compare that down. Well, I hope Steve does do what he, he suggested early on, that he might have a little training session for landlords, because I would love to see a bullet point thing. I made myself one years ago that would make it more clear and more easy. I can look at the outside of the house and go through this checklist and go inside and look at this checklist. And it would just make things easier for me to get the house ready, whether or not I'm inspecting it myself or if it'll be professionally inspected. And then the, one last thing is I do hope we have a, a clear explanation of fees, which we didn't get yet before the public hearing. And, and Sharon said she'd get me those. And, oh, one more thing. If a tenant requests or complains, they can, you know, we can be inspected. And there's a stipulation in the, in the current draft that says that, that, that tenant would have to provide a dated written notice, yes, I gave my landlord this, I asked him to fix a certain thing. What's been told us and what's not written in there is that our inspector would call us and say, you know, this person isn't gonna, about to be evicted or anything, are they? Because there was kind of an understanding that if they had a reason to be mad at me, then maybe that inspection for complaint purposes would kind of hold off until that tenant was out. And I would like to see that, that that were for sure in there again. So that was all for tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bruce Kelly, eight sixty-four McKenzie Avenue. On the Playland deal, I'm a, I'm for some development down there. And on the levy, how long are we going to know before we? It was to put in the paper yours a little ago about if the levies aren't repaired by a certain time, our, our flood insurance going have to be put in that area?
Two years ago is the correct answer, was our date. That said, I don't think that FEMA has scheduled us for a review yet. Once they schedule us for a review, I've been told it could be three to five years. We went to Washington DC and asked them to hold off for ten years. And Melissa maybe can speak a little clearer to this because she works with the Corps, but I don't wanna put her on any pressure. And it's actually FEMA who does the flood mapping. We want to, we think it's gonna take us ten years to get those repairs done. We went to the state of Iowa and got approved for flood mitigation money. We went to the state of Iowa and got, uh, approved for flood mitigation money, um, and that comes from the income, incremental increase in sales tax. Um, we've been notified, and Art, check me if I'm wrong, that we were projected to have a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in our one percent. With the flood mitigation program, we get the five percent incremental increase that the state would have got, so if you do the math, that's three and a half million in the first year of a fifty million expense, of which I believe thirty million is scheduled to come from the state, twenty million locally, and that not only fixes all the levees, but replaces Indian Cracks, so...
That's, that answers that question. Next thing is, written a deal that, um, our state, in all their high wisdom, how much of Broadway are we going to have to maintain?
The state of Iowa has undertaken, uh, an effort to get rid of all state highways that, um, that run through incorporated areas of a city, and their proposal then is from the Missouri River to Iowa Western Community College, so it would be all of Broadway in Canesville. Um, we have gone to them and talked to them about giving us a new product to start with. So if we're gonna take it over, um, will you give us a new street so that we can then schedule maintenance going forward? Uh, so I think it's two and a half miles from the river to Sixteenth Street, which would be the first phase they would give us, and they will give us eight million a mile to replace that. In addition to that, entire corridor of Broadway, Canesville, they also want to relinquish their responsibility for North Sixteenth, which is a highway. It comes in North Sixteenth, it goes over the Viaduct, and it goes south on the South Expressway. We've already agreed to take the South Expressway in conjunction with the railroad consolidation that's going, that's underway now, and that's related to the interstate improvements. Uh, so they want to give us eight and a half, or eight million per mile for West Broadway, they want to give us four million for Sixteenth, which isn't in too bad a shape. The, the storm sewer, the length of Broadway, which, if you're familiar with it, Broadway does not have storm sewer currently. It has sewer inlets at the corners that run north and south to either Avenue A or Second Avenue. We would be able to put storm sewer the length of Broadway and, and thus have storm sewer inlets in the middle of the block too, uh, rather than just the corners. Um, the cost of the sewer in conjunction with that Broadway rebuild is four million, so we'd get enough money to build the street, we'd get enough money to put the sewers in on Broadway, and time to plan for North Sixteenth. The rest of it from Sixteenth Street to Iowa Western, they want to deed over to us over a timeframe of the interstate construction, which, um, probably has another ten years, and we would work out a similar agreement for replacing that pavement as we took that property, and so, um, the best-case scenario is we would get all new streets from Iowa Western to the river, paid for by the Department of Transportation, as Councilman Ringenberg points out, would come out of your pocket, but also come out of the entire state's pocket, so...
Okay, what I was going to say is, state of Iowa, when I called in at six o'clock, we had a heave by Mercy Hospital, six o'clock at night. Seven o'clock, I drove back, they were out there and almost had it already fixed within an hour. One of our things that I have to say is, we're going to have to buy heavier snow equipment and more manpower, and I think we're going to have to put on more shifts to cover things that will happen.
Which really correlates back to your question about why do we have to add additional population to get that road use tax money to take care of the streets?
No, I, I, I'm not against-
And it's all, it's all, I got it right here, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm not gonna-
And as Councilman Ringenberg astutely pointed out, I get reminded every day, we have multiple exciting projects on the drawing board that frankly, we don't have enough money to do them all, and so we need-
Oh, I can bring you all sorts of things that should be done, uh, going up that hill, turning lane at, on the College Road, turning lane into the Restone up there, coming down the hill, turning lane on, yeah, by Kern, that, those, we need more acts, uh, so, we're never, like you said, we're never going to get that other lane over the highway, but to relieve that traffic of slamming on your brakes every day going over the top.
And I just want to point out, we're not going from five lanes to three.
I don't care. Big call.
Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight? Anyone from the council?
Um, I have one comment that I, we went long today, and I neglected to bring it up, um, but the mention of DOT reminded me. Is there someone, Greg is not here, good for him, he went home. Um, the, the intersection, I, I was leaving, uh, the Target on Friday and trying to get on the interstate, and it's just very dark there, and, and it's difficult to find the interstate versus the ditch, and if so, i- if Greg or someone can put a call out and please have them turn on the lights-
Holiday shopping somewhere else.
I can avoid the whole area.
Every holiday season, you come here.
I know, I have complaints about that. You can't get in, you can't get out, it's worse now, but, but seriously, it was, I, I was-
It's very awkward.
I was afraid that-
Some near misses.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I went like really slow, and I'm like, where's the road? I don't want to go out.
And forgive me for a suggestion on that, because I like the right on red, but maybe we ought to look at, because you have to move forward some, maybe it's illegal anyway, and I'm not following it, but I just, maybe we ought to, I've seen so many people almost get hit because of the highway coming in, it's just so sad.
I'll see if we can.
It's, it's pretty dangerous, yeah.
It's really narrow there, and it's very dark.
No, I was, I was afraid, and I, and I wasn't, I just wasn't familiar with the lanes.
I'll mention it to you.
Thank you very much.
So I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving, and we'll see you on the fifteenth.
I don't plan to stay on my diet.
Everything is calorie-free on Thanksgiving.
And I, I hope everybody enjoyed the discussion about road use taxes, now you know why the governor just recommended an increase in them after the election.
Of course.
Yeah, I just too.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Bluff Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Bluff Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.